Roll call, Jerry, if you would note that, oh, we do have Rich today. I was not so sure.
It's those road to time.
Anyway, we have all the planning commissioners here and Lyndell is representing the county board and this will be the last time he'll be on the planning commission with us. So, Lyndell, it's been a pleasure for the meetings you've attended and the insights you've offered, so.
Thank you.
Approval of the agenda? Our approval of minutes? We have the minutes in our packets and we're going to get a chance to review and any additions, corrections, deletions. If not, then entertain a motion for approval of minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Any further discussion? Bring none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the agenda? For the audience, if you haven't got it in the back bookcase, there's agendas there. Today's agendas are one through eighteen and with our consent items being three through nine. Anyone have any additions or changes to the agenda? Not entertain a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Bring none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Consent calendar. The following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by a planning commissioner, staff member, audience member for a separate consideration. Finding of this planning commission or recommendations of the county board of commissioners will make the final decision. PJ, if you would read items three through nine that are proposed for the consent calendar.
Sure. PJ, kind of a director of planning department. Item number three, conditional use permit review 0208 for Ron Plender to review a frame straightening business as a home occupation in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 0208 with the applicant's concurrence. Item four, conditional use permit review 1535 for Black Hills Raptor Center. Davis Engineering is the agent. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 1535 with the applicant's concurrence. Item five, conditional use permit review 1536 for Donald and Margaret Norton to review an existing shop building with living quarters to be used as a guest house on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit 1536 to the January ninth, two thousand seventeen, planning commission meeting in order for staff to meet with the applicants. Item six, construction permit review 1503 for bituminous paving. Bill Krokowski is the agent to review a portable asphalt batch plant to be set up on the Pete Lean and Sons gravel pit in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to end construction permit 1503 with the applicant's concurrence. Item four, conditional use permit 1640, John and Polly Preston, to allow a caretaker's residence in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue CUP 1640 to the January ninth, two thousand seventeen, planning commission meeting with the applicant's concurrence. Item eight, conditional use permit 1641, Robert and Glenda Frank, to allow recreational vehicle to be used as temporary living quarters while building a single-family residence on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1641 with fourteen conditions. Item nine, conditional use permit 1642 for Chase Gravatt, to allow for a single-wide mobile home to be used as a single-family residence on the subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1642 with nine conditions.
Are there any items staff wishes to poll?
Number six, please.
Any others from staff? Planning commission, any items somebody would like to poll? Audience, is anyone in the audience wishing any of those items three through nine to be polled for further consideration? Bring none, I guess I would entertain a motion for approval of consent calendars with items three through five and seven through nine.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Bring none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Now, take us to item six.
Item six, it seems as though it's a conditional use permit, but in the agenda it was put under a construction permit, so it should be conditional use permit review 1503. Otherwise, the staff's recommendation would stand.
So just in the agenda only is the correct?
Yes, only in the agenda.
So, do you want a motion to approve conditional use permit CU 1503 with?
Staff's recommendation to end.
Oh, I'm sorry, to end it. I'm sorry. To end conditional use permit CU 1503.
Yes, please.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion?
I'll be abstaining from the vote.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried with Rich abstaining. Now, take us to item ten.
All right, we'll get that set up here real quick. I'm going to tag team this one.
Good afternoon. Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. Item ten is conditional use permit 1638. This is a request to allow a townhome on the subject property in a suburban residential district. The applicants are Tom and Terry Hagerty. They are in the audience today. If you do have any questions for them, as, oh.
My bad.
Okay, you do that. As this property exists today, it's 1.62 acres. There are currently two access easements recorded for this property. One is a fifty-foot wide access easement and another is a forty-foot wide access easement to provide access to the two existing residences that are to the west of this lot, I believe. Access is provided off of Dark Canyon Road. Dark Canyon Road is currently approximately twenty-two feet wide. It is paved in a sixty-six-foot wide right-of-way and it's maintained by the county highway department. A portion of this property is located within the special flood hazard area, but it appears that the proposed townhouse would be located outside of the special flood hazard area. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process. There are a couple of comments that I do want to point out. The county fire administrator did have a question about emergency access vehicles. Would there be turnarounds, hammerhead tees, cul-de-sacs? And also, he did state that it appears there would need to be a fire mitigation plan. So, staff is recommending that the applicant work with the fire administrator for a fire mitigation plan and also to discuss emergency access for this lot. These will be addressed as conditions of approval if this conditional use permit is approved. The city of Rapid City Public Works did have a comment saying access to the dwelling units off of Dark Canyon Road already exceeds forty units. The Pennington County subdivision regulations does say that on a dead-end road, a dead-end road should not exceed twenty units and a dead-end road system, which would be a dead-end road that has connecting roads off of it, should not exceed forty units. There are currently forty-eight address points located off of Dark Canyon Road at this time. Another one that I wanted to point out was the county highway department. They said that the approach to Dark Canyon Road should be reconstructed to allow for the passing of two vehicles and also intersect perpendicular with Dark Canyon Road. So, on November twenty-first, staff did perform a site visit to this property. They found a vacant property other than the existing driveway that's inside of the existing access easements that provide access to those two residences. And the proposed building site appears to be approximately thirty feet higher in elevation than Dark Canyon Road. On November twenty-first, the planning department did receive a letter in opposition to this request and also on November twenty-eighth, we received a second letter of opposition to this request. So, PJ?
For the recommendation. Staff spoke with the applicant this morning. As you can see, the staff recommended denial because it goes against our ordinance and exceeds the forty units allowed on a dead-end road. However, if the planning commission chooses to approve conditional use permit 1538, staff originally recommended twelve conditions. After discussion and further review by the staff, staff would now recommend, if you would, we still recommend denial, but if you were to recommend approval, we'd recommend thirteen conditions, with the thirteenth condition being the following: that a subdivision regulation variance be obtained to vary from section seven hundred of the subdivision regulations. Section seven hundred is where it speaks about the dead-end road and dead-end road systems and a twenty and a forty structure limit. So, only the board of commissioners can ultimately approve that, so we were recommending putting it in as a condition if you wanted to approve it. And the applicants are in the audience today.
Mr. Chair.
Questions, yeah.
Can I ask you a question? I think you said that there are forty-eight.
Yes.
Do we know when it went over forty? Because we tend to not penalize people for just happening to be the twentieth or the fortieth. In the past, that's kind of the precedent we've set.
Sure. I don't think staff was able to pinpoint exactly when we exceeded that.
So, it's been some, quite some time?
Yeah. I can't remember a recent building permit for a house on Dark Canyon.
So, that would have occurred quite some time ago?
Potentially.
Okay. Thank you.
I would note we had a similar situation just very recently out in Rapid Valley and they weren't allowed to build another home in that location.
Correct.
In fact, it had a deed restriction.
Deed restriction to be pasture or egg only, so.
Yep.
But, I mean, we do have the precedent and that was a similar situation where the forty had been exceeded, I think, before the ordinance went into effect, so.
The extra condition would allow the applicant the opportunity to at least petition the board for it, a variance. I mean, they could do it anyway, but.
I guess that's the question. We've kind of had that discussion on various issues. I mean, do we approve something if we so choose to move forward with it ahead of that variance being granted or get the variance first and then come back and get the conditional use permit? To me, it may make more sense to do that instead of hanging something out there that may or may not be approved, but just a comment and I guess, I don't know, guidance from staff on that?
I would actually object with the, if request asking the applicant if he would want to do that and continue this until they go after the variance. Staff wouldn't really have a problem with that.
Applicants here wishing.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Tom Hagerty. My wife Terry's here with me, too. About three months ago, back in July, anyway, we found out that this lot was available for sale and at that time, I went down and visited with PJ, who's been extremely helpful. And I said, I explained to him our concept, another couple, Bill and Nancy Ewing and ourselves, were looking for a place to build a townhouse together and we discovered this lot and so I went down to the county and I said, okay, here's our concept. We're thinking we want to downsize, build a smaller dual home kind of situation. And PJ went to the, I'm not sure if I used the right words, but the codes and saw that townhouses were approved for that type of zoning. Is that correct? Did I say it right? Anyway.
With a conditional use permit.
With a conditional use permit.
Yeah, with a, yeah, with a conditional use permit. Okay, so, understanding that I'm not as familiar with these terms as you are, but after we had our visit, which lasted a half hour or so, basically, I got the impression that with that conditional, you know, use permit from you guys, that it wouldn't be a problem because townhouses were already allowed under that designation. So, I went ahead and bought the lot. Nothing at that time was said about the fire district or restriction or anything like that. Had it been said, I probably would not have bought the lot if I thought there was, this was, you know, unknown to me. So, I was saying, I feel kind of blindsided because as far as our conversation went, he did not say, oh, absolutely, it's a slam dunk, you got it, but he said, well, it's, that's allowed on this lot, so, you know, I don't know why you couldn't go for it, right? And so, based upon that input, we went ahead and bought the lot. So, I just have a couple of thoughts. First thing is, had I known that, I would have, you know, obviously, not purchased the lot, but at the same time, when you look at Dark Canyon Road, at least the first dozen residences on Dark Canyon Road are with, in a hundred or two-hundred feet of the highway. They're not actually down in the canyon, they're on the plateau before it drops down into the canyon. And if you eliminate those from the count, then you're under the forty, you know, and that's, I just feel like, I get it, I understand, you know, that the new requirements are that you can't go over forty, you know, addresses on a dead-end road. I don't really, obviously, that's the ruling, but I do feel like in this situation, there's some exceptional circumstances in that, you know, I had no idea that this was even an issue and, you know, a dozen of the houses are not actually down in the valley, you know? So, I guess I would like the commission to consider that and kind of put yourself in our shoes, like I say.
I guess I would note that it's off the roadway system, not necessarily whether it's in the valley or not. It's taking access off that road. And the other thing I would note, I mean, there, I mean, there's been some high-profile situations like in Chapel Valley on, you know, not having a second access and all that and that's basically based the same rule the city has.
Right, except there's like two-hundred homes there or something, whatever it is, you know, obviously.
Right.
I get it, you know, but that's an extreme, I think, example of the same thing where, you know, there's hundreds of.
I guess what I suggested is trying to get that variance first before getting the conditional use permit and I guess, this is personal, not from the planning commission, but I mean, like, this is a conditional use permit that's revocable and quite honestly, you know, to build a house on a revocable situation, I don't think that we've ever had a duplex, I mean, a duplex, quadruplex, townhouse or whatever, multiple unit is on a conditional use permit, which means it could be revoked at any time.
Mr. Chair. But we have approved conditional use permits for duplexes.
I'm not, no, I'm not saying we haven't, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, so don't think you're the first one.
No, no, and I'm not trying to, but to me, it's personally, again, not representing the planning commission, but I mean, it's one of the things that we need to change looking forward as we go through the comp plan because it doesn't make sense to me invested building a several hundred thousand dollar house when it's a revocable permit, so. But that's, you're right. I mean, we do that quite often. It's not a rarity that we're doing that. Every duplex that's built in the county is falling under that, so.
Mr. Chair.
Laurie.
Can I ask a question? You mentioned that there are several homes or lots near the entrance to this roadway. You know, even though there might not be a formal second entrance out, are there ways that people can exit Dark Canyon other than through the one main road off of some of those lots, you know, whether or not they have to, you know, take off through a fence or something?
Well.
I mean, sometimes topography prevents that, but.
Yes, right. There's definitely, I mean, the one that I'm thinking of that's sort of on the plateau just under the highway, yeah, you could bust through that fence and get out of there if you needed to, but, yeah, obviously, currently, right now, everyone is using that one exit that exits onto Highway forty-four.
I mean, because, again, we've talked about other lots that appear to only have one entrance, but in an extreme situation, there could be other ways out.
Right.
We've had situations where they've had to clear some trees that have grown up over the years because there was an emergency exit that no one obviously uses.
Was maintaining.
But it's illegal egress, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I did want to say, too, that I, we have absolutely no objection to the conditions that the, that these guys laid out. I mean, in fact, I talked through all those with Kelsey and as far as having enough parking, having somewhere where an emergency vehicle could pull in, I mean, we kind of resolved all that, that that's definitely doable. Even the reconstruction of the road so that it makes a T into Dark Canyon Road instead of being on an angle, we're not against spending the money to do that. So, I guess, you know, my whole perspective coming into this was, I want to do, and I, these were my exact words to PJ, I just want to cross all the Ts and dot all the Is and do this correctly. I'm not trying to buck a system and, of course, I was completely oblivious to the forty rule. I had no idea that existed and no idea it was even, could be an issue, so.
And Mr. Chair.
Laurie.
I guess I'd like to make the comment, too, that I think the whole situation of multiple, multiple-unit dwellings in residential areas is going to become more of an issue because people are aging and they want to have twin homes or multiple homes and I don't think the county should be against that because people want to live together in a residential area.
Yeah, we've talked about this for twenty years.
You know, twin homes and.
Yeah, downsize and, you know, have connecting homes and we can help each other take care of the lot and, you know, live on a one level, you know, kind of thing. A lot of you have probably thought or talked about that and, and so that's kind of where we were coming from. So, as I say, it wasn't PJ's fault, but I just felt kind of blindsided. I'm like, I felt like, oh, yeah, you can, this can probably happen, so, you know, you spend the money and then it's like, oh, didn't think about this, well.
Mr. Chair.
Barb.
Actually, I think the planning department did let you down because that is in the ordinance and it's easy to miss things, you know, I'm sympathetic to that, but you simply weren't informed of the rules and I'm very sorry for that.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Well, I would get, just appeal to you to, if we could, you know, find a way through this, we would really appreciate it and we know that, you know, we'll abide by whatever.
Mr. Chair. PJ, is there a way when individuals come in and they're looking at a piece of property, like this individual, they're like, hey, I'm thinking about buying this piece of property, what would the time involvement be to kind of at least take a cursory look to say, hey, that area is overpopulated already or it's something that, you know, because you've already heard him say, hey, I'm thinking about buying this property and building a home, what would that take in the staffing's eyes?
It depends on the property. Really, we're all answering the questions that are asked. The conversation we had, he had enough information to go forward with the conditional use permit. All the other information, the comments that come back from the different departments, we don't know that until after the conditional use permit is applied for and we don't devote all staff time to one of these until the application is received.
But, you know, sometimes people just don't know what they don't know and they don't know what to ask either.
Absolutely, and we don't know what is around it or what exists until we start doing research into different departments' files as well.
But this is plainly a dead end, though, and so you knew that.
It is a dead end, it is a dead end, yeah, but we did not purchase the property.
Yeah, but you knew it was a dead end, though.
I mean, in your defense, PJ, I mean, you don't have a database that anticipates every condition for every piece of property that you have access to. I mean, you know, you don't know that until you start getting into the details, so.
I don't need any defense. I don't take offense at anything up here. I mean, it's the way that things are done. We don't know all the details until after the application comes in. If we treat every meeting as if they are actually applied, then we're wasting taxpayer dollars and we are not to do that. We devote it to the people that pay for it.
Right. That's the only reason why I was asking if there was something that could, you know, is there any kind of thing that could trigger something, but perhaps there's not because of the way the system is already established or built. You have to get those questions asked.
And a lot of purchases of property are contingent on a conditional use permit being obtained.
And I think this kind of goes back to an issue we've had is realtors not informing a seller.
Yes.
We've had numerous issues there where people are buying properties that need building permits because numerous buildings were put on and the realtors aren't relaying that to the buyer. The buyer comes in to put a shed and all of a sudden, boom, they're hit with fines for not having building permits on pass. I mean, it's unfortunate, but.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, you really anticipated my comment because this is the other part, your real estate agent, hopefully, you think that your agent is going to inform you of everything and unfortunately, they don't.
Yeah, primarily.
And we've learned that again and again.
We primarily just worked with the owners and then we had a friend who's a real estate agent write up the purchase agreement. And so, obviously, did the owners know? I don't think so. They never mentioned it. We talked extensively with them over a period of a couple of weeks and so, perhaps not. They are the ones who developed this area and sold three, well, they built two of the houses, I think, that are on those, in that immediate area and sold two of the lots. So, you know, I don't know, I guess my thing is I'm kind of trapped now, or Terry and I are, where we're like, jeez, we had no clue that this was the way it is and if this is true, then, and if you guys feel like you have to, you know, hold the line, then, you know, no one will ever be able to build in Dark Canyon again, which is, maybe that's okay, but this is certainly, it's 1.68 or 1.66 acres, so it's not like we're crowding people or, and it's also located just literally sixty seconds from the first bridge as you drop down into Dark Canyon. So, the lot is close to the exit of Dark Canyon, but again, you know, I think we're both in kind of a bad position here and so I'm just.
Is your timing, I think one way or another, you're going to have to go through the subdivision variance permit.
Right.
I guess I would feel more comfortable if that went in front of the county commissioners first before approving the conditional use permit. One of the things, like I said, maybe last meeting or two meetings ago, we just basically restricted someone from building on a lot that they wished to build on and it got limited to egg land only and similar situation as the units were exceeded. So, I'd rather see the variance first and then approve the conditional use permit, but that's why I'm asking if timing is critical for you as far as.
No, we've got time and we weren't planning on breaking ground.
Yeah, you're going to have to go through that process first. I'd almost rather see this continued, go through the variance and quite honestly, I think you have a good chance of getting it, but that's up to the county commissioners.
Sure.
And then come back for the conditional use permit.
Okay.
I do have, PJ, kind of a question just as far as the staff report. There were some comments about not having turnarounds, you know, in Dark Canyon and all that and this is kind of, we run into the situation, too. I don't know that it is appropriate to put that on Tom and Terry, you know, just to do road improvements through the whole canyon, but, you know, that's one thing as we go through the comp plan, I hope we address to.
The comments from the fire administrator, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
How do we come to that point of, you know, what triggers it and it's an unfair burden to put it on the last person in?
It's a criteria.
Yeah.
That's what we've talked about before.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Rich.
Sir, are you planning on subdividing the lot once you build the townhomes on there down the center?
Not really. We had planned on.
So, you'd be building townhomes then and not subdividing the lot?
That was, that was our plan.
You understand, though, that if you end up doing that someday, that that triggers the same discussion at the city of Rapid City and there's more that comes into this?
Yes, we discussed that today at the office upstairs.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that that would create an issue.
All right.
Question, CD. If they were to build a single-family dwelling, one unit, would this be an issue?
Yes.
It'd still be an issue.
It'll be an issue.
Even though they wouldn't have to have a conditional use permit then?
Correct.
Just a building permit.
Correct.
Another question, Mr. Chairman. Does Rapid City have an ordinance about dead-end roads?
Yes, it's a party unit rule, too.
It is, so you're going to have to get a variance from both?
Well, I think once it was approved by us while it's in the county, that would essentially grandfather it in for, if it ever got annexed by the city.
Oh, you think, okay.
I'm not, we've got our attorney here, but.
They exist in the city's one mile.
Yeah.
And in the three mile, but right now, all this is for us. All this is county. Until they plat or go for septic, then they'll be with the city, well, under that jurisdiction.
Well, staff's recommendation is for denial, however, they have offered us thirteen conditions of the subdivision variance being number thirteen, or as I suggested, if someone wants to venture a motion, I would maybe suggest that we let the subdivision variance go to the county commission and continue this until after the variance is obtained. Someone wish to make a motion?
I'll make that motion. If they, if the subdivision variance is obtained, thus, we continue this item until such time.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. Further discussion?
Thank you for your time.
I guess my discussion on that is that, you know, the lots down this road were platted at some time. If he's going to put up a townhouse and not subdivide that property, this is a key point, that then, you know, essentially, we're building out the lots that are there. So, the mistake was made back when, when we, you know, allowed the plating of all of these lots with more than forty along a single access point. The trigger, I think, in the future needs to be is if they start, want to subdivide these properties, then that brings in all of the other things that come along with that as far as the water and sewer and everything else, so.
And I know that's happened even within the city or the plating jurisdiction of the city where as people get off septics, which require at least a half-acre lot and then they wish to subdivide that and put two houses on a quarter-acre lots, you know, then all of a sudden, you get into that forty-unit rule, it can get triggered. So, that's a good point as far as that, what the plating could end up creating.
Mr. Chair, this is an old community, Rich, and these, there may have been forty-eight houses there long before the ordinance, you know.
Before the flood.
Yeah, truly.
Fewer houses there, most of us were there to see that.
Yeah.
We do have a motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carried.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to continue, carried. Take it to item 11.
Good afternoon, Brittany Molitor. Item 11 is Vacation of Easement VE 1602, to vacate a portion of a 20-foot underground power line easement for lots 14 and 16, and to also vacate the 8-foot drainage and utility easement between lots 14 and 15, and to also vacate the 8-foot drainage and utility easements between lots 15 and 16. The applicant is requesting to vacate these as he has requested a plat to combine three of these lots into one. He was approved for a layout plat by the Board of Commissioners to create Lot 14R on December 6, 2016. In addition, on December 8, 2016, he did submit a minor plat application for Lot 14R of the Forks at Remington Ranch. These easements would not be needed with the new plat, and the 8-foot drainage and utility easements around the interior lot lines are proposed for Lot 14R at the Forks at Remington Ranch. In addition to, power line easements will be created in Lot 14R also. So, staff is recommending approval of vacation easement with three conditions.
Questions?
Mr. Chair, so this is just clearing out the interior drainage and utility easements in the middle of the lot? Is that what I understand is to do?
Correct, they won't be needed any longer since it'll be one lot.
And when Lot 14R was platted, those same easements were extended out to the outside of that, so that the exterior utility and drainage easements still exist on Lot 14R?
Correct, and there's existing utilities there, and Black Hills Power and Century Link both were in concurrence, and okay with the vacation of these easements.
I have no further questions.
You said Black Hills Power earlier, other utilities contacted, or?
Yes, Black Hills Electric Cooperative stated that they have no issue with the vacation of utility easements between Lot 14 and 15 and between 15 and 16. In addition, Century Link had no objections, they were both received.
Staff's recommendation is for approval.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? On page five, under the heading B, it says Black Hills Electric Co-op, and then it says Black Hills Energy, I just wanted to make sure that was clear, both of them? Because Electric Co-op's different than Energy, right? Energy Corp.
Right, but that's what he was the actual, in the email, we just take what they say exactly.
So, it is Black Hills Electric Cooperative, not Energy Corp., right? That's the utility, the electrical utility?
It's the utility that's out there, I believe it's the.
It's Electric Corp., okay, that's all, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve VE 1602 with three conditions.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
Item 12.
Okay, get my presentation up here. Item 12 is a layout plat 1629. This is a request to create tract B1 and tract B2 of the ranch at Black Gap. The applicant is Dakota Land and Cattle Company, the agents are Jeff Loggie and Jennifer Landgoth, and the surveyor is Spurlet Consulting. The applicant is requesting to create tracts B1 and B2 of the ranch at Black Gap in order to eliminate an existing non-transferable balance that was created when common lot one was platted. As this property exists today, it is zoned plan unit development, it's located within the ranch at Black Gap Plan Unit Development. It's 53.29 acres, and it is located within the ranch at Black Gap Road District. It's currently vacant, and there's no special flood hazard area on the subject property. There is a section line, when you look at Rapid Map, that runs north-south approximately right here, but that section line right away was relocated in 1998. As they are proposing it, tract B1 of the ranch at Black Gap will be 3.18 acres, and access to that property will be off of Ambush Ranch Road, and tract B2 would be 50.10 acres, and access to that property could be off of Ambush Ranch Road or Vantage Point Court. There's, would be two reasonable accesses to that property. This was routed through the inner departmental review process, not really anything of concern came back. In June of 2000 is when the common lot one, which runs right through here, June of 2000 is when that was platted with the Register of Deeds, common lot one is platted as a major drainage easement. In March of 2006 is when the Board of Commissioners approved planned unit development 0602, and there are 21 conditions on that planned unit development. So, then in November of this year, the applicant applied for this layout plat, and in the documents filed with the application, they indicated that the plating of common lot one created a non-transferable balance of the property. So, the purpose of this is to eliminate that balance and give both of these tracts their own tax ID, their own tract number, all of those kinds of things. A portion of this property does lie within the three-mile plating jurisdiction of the city of Rapid City, so you can see the yellow here is their plating jurisdiction. And as noted in comments from the city of Rapid City Community Planning and Development Services, the city council approved the preliminary subdivision plan for the portion that lies within the city's jurisdiction on December 5 of 2016. And due to this property lying within two separate plating jurisdictions, the plat that is filed with the Register of Deeds has to contain certificates and signatures from all applicable county and city authorities, so they can file one plat, but it has to go through the process with the county and the process with the city and have all of the signatures on one plat. So, staff is recommending approval of layout plat 1629 with 10 conditions.
Questions?
Yeah. I have never heard this term before, non-transferable balance, and you've now related it to a common lot. Would you be more specific on what's going on so I can understand?
Basically, when they created this, this common lot that runs in through here, this little section out here, it has to do with the register of deeds and how deeds can be filed. So, this little section out here kind of creates a problem for deeding it to people because it's not connected to the big part, basically. So, it kind of creates something that can't be transferred on its own, so putting it into two tracts allows that tract to be its own separate deedable thing on its own.
What is that lying between them?
That's the common area, or that's the common lot one, this right here?
Lot line, I've never heard that one before.
No, the common lot, it's a common lot, yep, it's a major drainage easement is what it was platted as.
Got it, okay, thanks.
Other questions? Staff's recommendation is for approval of layout plat 1629 with 10 conditions, that they entertain a motion?
Second.
For approval for staff's, okay. Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
Item 13.
Item 13 is rezone 1613 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1610, to rezone 20 acres from general agriculture district to limited agriculture district, and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from planned unit development sensitive to limited agriculture district. The applicant is Joseph Thebirge, agent is a renter and associate, so again, this encompasses 20 acres. For the last couple of years, the applicant has been involved with the city of Rapid City to subdivide this property. It's 20 acres, he's looking to subdivide it into, from what we understand, at least two 10-acre lots. One of the requirements from the city of Rapid City is that he obtain a rezone from the county first. If it was to go to 10 acres, limited agriculture would be the appropriate size, as 10 acres is the minimum. However, if you notice in the staff report that if during plating, for some reason, they were to go below 10 acres, the applicant also has the opportunity to obtain a lot-size variance or to rezone down to low-density residential, it just really depends on how the applicant ends up plating the property through the city of Rapid City. It is currently zoned general agriculture, the future land use is planned unit development sensitive, there's no special flood hazard on the area, and as mentioned, it does lie within the city's plating jurisdiction, and it also lies within the city's one-mile septic buffer. There are a number of structures on the property, and one of which, if you look at the very last page of your packets, I believe it should be last page, is what's called a shed or a barn, depending on who's responding, that seems to encroach within the 66-foot section line right away. One of the requirements from the city of, before he also moves forward with the subdivision, is that that shed be removed, or it's moved outside the 25-foot setback that is attached to the 33-foot or half of that section line, so there's 58 feet on either side of the section line. The current zoning within a half-mile of the property is general ag, limited ag, low-density residential, suburban residential, PUD, and general commercial. And if you look at the future land use, you can see there's a large portion of it is public land, and also planned unit development sensitive. The other portion of this rezone is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and again, the applicant is looking to amend the Comprehensive Plan and change it from planned unit development sensitive to limited agriculture zoning district. This was routed through the inner departmental review, and the only item of note is the ones we've already discussed from the city of Rapid City. So, as far as the final analysis, if the, I've kind of already covered everything, so as there's no conditions that can be put onto a rezone, staff recommends approval of rezone 1613 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1610.
Do you feel the need to split the vote on that, or can it be covered in one motion?
We've usually done them together, so.
Questions for PJ? Staff's recommendation is for approval, and as PJ noted, rezones can't have conditions put on them, so it's basically up or down vote, so.
That's why this is in the analysis that we've talked about.
Do they entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move the CA 1610 to rezone from general agriculture to limited agriculture, and what else here?
The county amendment of 1610, the rezone 1613?
Yeah, yeah, okay, 1613 and Plan Amendment 1610 be approved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carried. Take it to item 14.
Item 14 is the county board report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendation from the November 14 and November 28 Planning Commission meetings. Items of note, number one, the second reading of planned unit development 1603 for Dan and Nancy Evangelisto. The second reading was approved at the December 6, 2016 Board of Commissioners meeting. Item number two, second reading of ordinance amendment 1610 to amend section 103, 208, and 319. The second reading was approved at the December 6, 2016 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Mr. Chair, I thought it was interesting, I don't know if you guys read the article in the journal about the ordinance changes? Where, maybe I read it wrong, I had to read it twice, but somebody made the comment that creating vacation home rentals is increasing property values? I thought that was very interesting, because a lot of people have come in here and said that that decreases property values.
I saw that article.
Yeah, I read it twice, and I'm like, wait, this person is saying that the fact that there are vacation home rentals in suburban residential districts is raising property values, and that's causing a burden for the neighbors? And that's completely contradictory to what a lot of people were telling us, that vacation homes are reducing their property values? So, I'm a little confused.
I think I can explain that. It's increasing property values because when a property is sold as a vacation home rental, it can be sold at a higher price because it's going to garner a great deal of money over a period of time.
So, that.
And it also, hold on, it also, if it sells for a higher price, then the surrounding properties will be assessed at a higher price, and people will pay a tax burden. Now, those people who only want to sell their residences as residences, the price has been inflated and their taxes have been inflated.
So, that totally does.
But they might not get the price.
Yeah, I know.
For just a residence that you would get if you're selling for a vacation home rental. So, it's a tricky little thing going on.
But still, the vacation home rental is still going to be as a conditional use permit, so it's not guaranteed that if that property sells, that it's going to continue as a vacation rental. I'm really, I really don't think that we can say vacation home rentals are pulling property values down.
I don't know about the rest of staff, I've heard either way, but not from a person of authority.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just wanted to point out that that was an interesting comment because in my, I hadn't heard that before.
Well, we've heard the comment in a different way, is that it's, the sellable lots are going to be decreasing for families because.
Right.
The businesses that are running vacation home rentals are going to be purchasing all the lots.
For vacation home rentals.
Right, so if you have a house next door to you that's a vacation home rental, and it's a very busy, active property, and you want to sell your property as a residential property, who's going to want to buy it?
Well, they're going to, because they're going to have to pay more?
No, because they don't want to be, live next to a motel.
Oh.
I think long shorted, but there's not enough history to make an informed decision at this point.
Yeah, when, we looked at this a long time ago, but it was for cell towers, when the monopine came up, and it took DOE probably a week to look into it. They actually concluded that property values went up in the area where the towers were, not down as we had heard during the meetings.
Which brings up the tax problem.
And there was, that was another comment, too, for this one that we just heard, about the townhomes being built in Dark Canyon. The letters of opposition said that the townhomes were going to decrease their property values, and it was like, really? A twin home's going to decrease your property values? I mean, I don't know what to believe.
Park Drive, you're allowed twin homes that are sold.
Yeah.
You never know what the market's going to do.
Well, I mean, because, because we're an aging population and people are not wanting to have single homes.
Well, I don't know, I still want a single.
But there's a lot of people that don't want that. I mean, I think for every person that does, you can probably find people, I mean, I don't know, I guess I'm just saying is that I, I would like to see data, so I could understand that whole issue.
And that's exactly why we had to go to DOE for the monopine, because it had been said so often.
Because I think, I think the people that are making those comments are just, it's based on their perception.
Well, I heard the same thing on Park Drive when they started putting twin homes on Park Drive, and.
They just keep building more twin homes.
And those are selling like hotcakes, so. So, which means they can ask a better price.
They're finding people that want to live there, yeah.
I think you're right, there is a lot of retiring people that want to downsize or at least be on a single level or other multi-levels, you know, I know my knees are shot.
And if any of us really understood the real estate market, we'd be very rich.
Probably so.
Mr. Chairman, if you take a different scenario, and you say, okay, here's the neighborhood, and the things that will affect your property values, up or down? If you have a business, a vacation home rental, odds are you're going to keep it up, it's going to be attractive, well-maintained, and so on. But somewhere in that same neighborhood, there's a bunch of people that are trashy. They got two, three old wrecked cars sitting around, they've got garbage all over the place. Whose values are going to, whose conduct is going to affect the values more?
The neighborhood.
Well, we have ordinances to protect against junk and garbage.
Covenant.
Yeah.
I am kind of curious just to see if, is this ordinance going to get revisited another three to four years from now?
Well, if the comp plan comes up, it'll at least be talked about there as well.
Yeah.
That'd be interesting to, yeah, see if any comments come up during the comp plan, but, I mean, it's passed, it's a done deal, so, we're past it, so. Any other comments, I guess, on?
Nothing from.
County board report? Items from the public? Joyce? Do you have anybody else back there? I thought we did.
Joyce Shagru, member of the public, you know I'm here for a purpose. It's interesting in your, in your discussion about property values, because I think we don't know. don't know. And I, that leads me to say, as I've said before, that we need more research when we make decisions like this. I believe that information is out there. We had Shannon come and talk to us about how he assessed property values for tax purposes. And he told us that the properties would not be inflated or deflated, they stood on their own. Then there was an article in the newspaper, and I didn't know this was going to come up, I think it was in March sometime, when the comment was made that they took into account property that generated income. And we had asked about whether a business would inflate or deflate in a, in a neighborhood. And the answer is unknown. I think it is known out there, but we did not research that. And many more decisions were based on that ordinance change without any factual information. The one piece that we did get was from PJ at the end when he put together how many lots were over and one, over or under one acre by zoning district. If I went back to my notes, that's the only piece of factual information that was presented in that way. So I think maybe you can take that forward as you think. So that's just an aside. I came here today to tell you that at the last county commission meeting, I knew how the vote was going to go, and it went the way I predicted, and I'm not always right. But I did speak with them about four points. And Lindell knows this because he heard it. The first was the lack of transparency with how the decisions were made. The side that I supported was very open. We put our, all of our letters, as far as I know, were in the public record, okay? So they were there for the public to view, to discuss, to see. The strategy from the other side was to do it differently, as I understand it, and one of the county commissioners told me this, so I do believe it, although I've not seen any of it, was to use a strategy to lobby outside the public view. And I was, I also read the article in the newspaper several times. What I had, what I did before that, though, was I asked, I got permission, I talked to quite a few people about whether this was appropriate. I asked each commissioner their viewpoint on how it stood in the public record versus what they'd gotten privately. And I got direct responses from two of them. One said it was overwhelmingly in support of not opening SRD, and I can understand why that commissioner said that and why he's looked that way. The others said that it was about 50/50. So my point to them was that people are more honest if they know that the public is going to read what they write. It, I certainly look more factually at what I write when I know it's going to be in the public record. And I was interested in one county commissioner's comment in that newspaper article that the, and I, and I have it back there, and I, and I'm not quoting it directly, that vocally and in writing or something like that, it was overwhelmingly one way versus the other. And I really don't believe that. I, I don't know about what was written because of course I have not, I don't have access to it. But vocally, one side was very quiet. And that bothers me because of comment I heard from the public. It's been said publicly and in private that the variance process, and I know you don't relate to that, the variance process is available for those who want to put VHRs on less than one acre. A public person said if no one from the group that wants SRD wide open speaks publicly against the one acre, because if you look at the facts, about 70% in SRD are less than one acre lots and 30% are over. And if they do not speak publicly, the fix is already in. Now, I don't know what that means, but the only avenue is a variance process. I'm a very trusting person and I do not want to change. I believe that people, they don't know about the process, as you've heard today, or they don't know all of the facts. But I want to trust that people will be honest. So one of the things that I will do going forward is watch how the variance process goes. And you all know what the message is in this community on the variance process, very public. People tell me that you should go ahead and do what you want, then ask for the variance because you will get it. That's shameful, but it's hard to reverse. And I've read the variance process ordinance and it's not a wide open, you can get whatever you want, it's pretty clear in the ordinance. So if it's going to be different, different than that, that ordinance should be changed. And I know that's not your business and I understand that, but I am going to watch that. Two things, though, that I think that you can do, and of course I'm talking about VHRs, you know why I'm here. One is to use the CUP process maybe differently than you have in the past. I think there's a lot of power in the CUP process. I think it's pretty clear that that's your purview, yours in the planning department. What I see with the VHRs often is that those conditions are pretty canned. You know, they repeat what's in the ordinance, they're not individualized. Sometimes they are. I take, for example, there was one in the last go-around of CUPs where a fire pit was not allowed because of the fire danger. You didn't allow that. When, in the ordinance, they are allowed, but you have conditions. And the other more recently is the one where the neighbors came in and complained about the garbage service, the community garbage service and misuse of it, and the ATVs that were raising dust. And I think you all know that circumstance. So the neighbors were upset about that. Now, that wasn't the only thing they were upset about, but that's two really concrete things. Put those in the condition so that when PJ's staff reviews them a year later, were there, what did they do about the garbage service? And, and I don't know if it was before you or the county commissioners, I got up and I said, if I was that businessperson, I would immediately put in my own garbage service. Problem gone. I would trailer those ATVs like the neighbors wanted, problem gone. If there was dust from the ATVs, it wouldn't be mine. I don't know that he did that. But use the conditional use process to help ameliorate some of those problems that come before you. And I think it will make the whole process work better. The other is enforcement. I have had people tell me, quite a few of them, that the process is not fair. The most recent, well, was Pamtroxyl. It's not fair that we can't do certain things that other people do and there's no reprimand. Now, I personally am not aware of any illegal VHRs, but we had people in the committee say, I know illegal VHRs, but I'm not going to turn them in because I don't believe in the regulation to begin with. Something's broken here and needs to be fixed. So why didn't you ask from PJ for a fiscal impact of what it would take to enforce the ordinance that has just been passed? Because the reason that it's not enforced, it's been told to me, is that we don't have the staff. So why have an ordinance that you will not enforce? It isn't, you know, you know what the ordinance is, enforce it. If you can't, don't have it because it is inherently unfair. And I believe in this system, I'm an old government employee, I know how it works. I believe in it. I believe in government employees. They are very good people, very good people. I would never discount them. They work very hard, they're very dedicated. But there's a limit to what they can do. And if you're going to pass laws, enforce it. Don't put an 80 mile an hour limit on the interstate if you're going to let everybody go 95. You know, you just, there has to be a fiscal impact for the decisions that are made. And you don't make the final decision, you're in the middle of it, but you're on the enforcement side. And so look at that for the next budget cycle or whatever you present. And I know it's hard. I've been in positions where I had to ask for staff, and I know how disheartening that is. But keep at it. Don't not do it because you're afraid you're going to get a no. You'll never get the staff that you need in the department unless you ask for it. If you never ask, you will never get the enforcement staff. And we all know of infringements, we know how people do things, and then they come and ask for forgiveness, that's the word on the street. If you enforce, that word would change. And the process is good. I know from experience that if you put conditions on people, they pay attention. They, they've even said that here. It helps us to know that the quiet hours are at 10:00 or 10:30. They use you guys as the bad guys then, but that works. They enforce it themselves because they know it's in there and they're going to get in trouble if they don't follow it. So it does have power, use it. And so I will come back when I see something on the agenda that I'm interested in how you're doing it, just to observe how it's going. You know, it's done, it's interesting, some don't agree with it, some don't, that shouldn't agree with it, appear to say it's okay, that's worrisome. But I'll, I'll see how it goes, I'll watch your agendas and, and see how you work with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce, for your comments.
Mr. Chair?
Barbara.
May I ask you a question, Commissioner Peterson? Joyce brought up the idea of a fiscal impact statement. Now, I know they do that in peer and the legislators absolutely hate it because it's usually the death of a bill, but do, does Pennington County ever do such a thing when they're considering ordinances? Look for a fiscal impact statement because that would make a big difference on a lot of the ordinances that are put forward.
I'm not aware of any process that's been used since I've been a commissioner here in Pennington County relative to that.
Maybe that is something that we should look into then because that would have made a big difference in the vacation home rental, I think, because Joyce, in my opinion, is absolutely right.
Any other comments, I guess, anything further from the public? I guess items from staff?
The only item we have is the ex parte communication memorandum written by Kinsley Groot. Since it came directly from the county state's attorney's office and is a guidance document, I'm going to turn it over to Angela for interpretation.
Angela Shute from the state's attorney's office. Kinsley wrote this memo regarding what to do when you receive information outside of a public meeting. I'm just going to briefly kind of hit the highlights of it. I believe everyone received a copy of the memo and I hope you've had a chance to read through it. When it comes to ex parte communications or information received by elected officials or appointed officials outside of a public meeting, SDCL 161-18, which came about in 2015, states that such officers may receive and consider relevant information from any source and can rely on their own experience and background on any official matters. However, there's the, subject to the applicable law and rules concerning recusal and disqualifications. So basically, if you receive any information outside of a public meeting or hearing, you can rely on that information in making your decisions. However, SDCL 6-1-20 states that if you are relying upon any such information, you shall disclose it to the full public body at the public hearing so that everyone who's making the decision has the opportunity to consider that information. These basically only apply when there's a quasi judicial function, which is most of what you do, you're receiving evidence, you're making determinations, granting privileges, you know, the conditional use permits and other things, kind of acting as, as a judge or jury in approving or not, or denying certain applications. SDCL 6-1-21 states that officers are presumed to be objective and capable of making decisions without, on a fair basis. However, if it can be shown by clear and convincing evidence that there's any prejudice or bias, then you would be disqualified from participating in that decision. So the safe play would be to, if you're receiving information outside of a public hearing that you intend to rely on in making your decision, disclose it to the whole commission so that everyone has the opportunity to consider that information. Ideally, if you're receiving information from people, they should be at the hearing or the meeting to present that information to the whole group as well. But if it doesn't happen that way, you should be making sure that everyone knows. One thing that Kinsley pointed out is it's really important that you don't make any promises or kind of indicate what your decision would be until you're here in a public forum. She, she briefly hit on the topic of serial communications. I don't know if that's an issue or not, but it's, it's always important to know that if you're communicating with each other outside of a public meeting, that you don't do it in a way that decisions are being made by a quorum outside of the public hearing. So basically, keep everything open. You're allowed to rely on information that you receive. Obviously, everyone has different experiences and backgrounds, it's why you're on this commission, you know things, but just make sure that everyone basically is on the same page or has the same information before decisions are made.
Questions for Angela? I thought, I did appreciate the serial communication because I don't know, I don't think that's an issue here at all, but I mean, where it's basically telegraph, you know, and you make a decision, you don't have necessarily a quorum, but you have a quorum by telegraph.
Right, and, and it can be, I mean, I don't think it's usually done deliberately, it's, you might have, you know, two people who are discussing an issue and maybe say, well, you know, I'm thinking I'm going to lean this way, I'm going to decide this way, and then one of them calls someone else and they're discussing it and then, you know, it's kind of the chain thing, it's not a deliberate meeting, but it just happens that way. And so it's...
I don't think it's an issue, we don't talk to each other.
I was just going to say, yeah, yeah. We don't really like each other.
You know, I, I think I must have lost the email because I did not, I probably got one and messed it up somehow. Could somebody resend me the memo? Because I would like to read it through.
Yes, I can...
Commissioner Landers.
Here, here, I'll reprint mine.
Yeah, I'd like to have it in email if I could. Thank you.
At least you have that.
Thank you very much.
Other questions for Angela or any discussion on that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Items for membership.
I would like to Skype in on the January meetings if that's okay, for the 9th and 23rd, so I'll just get with Andy and he'll set me up. Did that seem to work okay the last time?
Yeah, the second time we did.
Yeah, once I was Skyping you, yeah, before I was yelling at my husband in public. I'll try not to do that. And then I'll be gone for the, the first meeting in February, but I'll be back for the one on the 27th, so.
I may be out, though, was it March 19th, I think, or is that a Monday? Okay, yeah, I'll know more anyway, so that's not a...
I'll be there then.
Yeah, okay.
I should be.
I'd like to touch on the topic that we talked about last meeting, whenever I brought up about submission and getting our packages maybe a couple days earlier, whatever. PJ and Jerry and I sat down and talked and we've gone through the process and seen where there might be some snags or where there might be some areas where we can do it. So we're going to talk about it some more over the next couple months or over the next month or so. But, so, I don't know if Jerry's going to talk about it or PJ's going to talk about it specifically. The next schedule we get, we're only going to get for January, February, March, so she doesn't build it out the whole way, just in case we do a trial to see if it works better for their office.
Can we go on the 13th?
Yeah, it'd be 13th.
13th, okay.
You have anything else you'd like to add?
That basically sums it up. Usually, prior to the new year, Jerry prepares our hearing calendar, which has the dates of the planning commission, board of commissioners, our departmental review team meetings, also all the deadlines and all the holidays. It's usually, like I said, prepared for January through January. What we had discussed is just preparing it from January to March to allow us time to discuss the possibility of moving the deadlines and then beginning that after March, so in April. But we're looking hopefully to have an answer by the end of January. But this way, we don't put out a full calendar with people thinking that those are going to be the deadlines. We just leave those blank with a little note that the deadlines may change. We'll have the meetings on there, because they're going to stay the same. It's the deadlines that may change. And they say may. Could stay the same. We just have to figure out what works best for everybody.
And I made it clear when we were talking today, too, my goal's not to create a big headache for everybody. You know, if it works better, then great. If it doesn't work better, you know, I'm not saying that we feel that we have to do a change. It's just making it an option so that, you know, some of us can have a little extra time if we need it to do our due diligence and things, especially when life happens.
I'm just curious, I brought that up in the last meeting, too, is I'm not sure the history of when the meetings got moved from afternoon to morning. Does that give people a little more, I mean, like, if, we've heard several times where people aren't getting packets or information until Friday or Saturday, and then there's no one to contact, and then Monday morning, the meeting's already. So, I mean, does that give the applicant a little more time? I mean, that morning time, if we had afternoon time? I'm not necessarily advocating that, but I mean, when I was on planning commission here in 2000, I mean, it was a 1 o'clock meeting instead of a 9 o'clock.
Yeah, it was somewhere between like 2003 and before 2005. They changed it from, it was either 1:00 or 1:30 to 9:00 a.m. planning commission meetings.
I don't know if there's any pros or cons on the timing for staff?
It was weird to have a 2 o'clock.
Yeah, the meetings, yeah.
I think it was 1 o'clock.
Yeah.
All in favor of changing that?
Sounds like maybe an afternoon meeting's in favor.
Well, I, you know, and I don't know, for the planning commission, I don't know if that creates more of a burden or not. I don't know.
I like 9. I wouldn't have it any earlier than 9.
Absolutely not earlier than 9. I agree.
I'm thinking 9 or 5 P.M.
He said 5?
Would be my preference.
Well, I'm sure there'd be some public that'd be in favor of that, so.
4, maybe 4.
I'm looking, I'm looking through the bylaws to see if there's any, I don't think, so far, I don't find any specific time mentioned.
What time are the county commission meetings?
They start at 9, and we go anywhere between 10:30 and 2.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Anyway, I guess I, you know, not necessarily right now, but I mean, for staff to have discussion and see it from the staff's perspective, it would be, timing would be more advantageous.
I mean, that's why 9 o'clock is nice, because, I mean, it can run till, I mean, 1, that's 4 hours. I mean, really, seriously, you need to stop then. You know, if you started at 2, that would run you till 6, really.
Yeah, sometimes we did.
Yeah, that's why I think a morning meeting is better.
There's nothing in the section 6.0 under meetings in the bylaws that mentions a specific time. So, you wouldn't have to change the bylaws to change a meeting.
Well, like I said, I'm, you know, it's both, you know, for the planning commission, you know, what's, works in also. But I mean, I think what works for the public as far as if they've got a little more chance to ask questions and all that before they're thrown into a meeting, too, if they've only got their packet or information late Friday or Saturday or something like that. Anyway, just...
There's even been some talk, we heard it once, I think, of possibly moving planning commission to Wednesday morning.
I'm kind of with Lori. I like 9.
My preference is for 9 o'clock in the morning as well. I think people are more alert in the morning, better decision-making skills, that kind of stuff.
And I'd pick, I'd pick Monday or Friday, not Wednesday. That would just be weird.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, either end of the week, begin of the week.
It's also a deadline day for us, so we'd have, most of the staff is down here. There's skeleton crew upstairs, so.
No, it sounds like consensus to keep it at 9, so. Anyway, just thought I'd throw that out there and just kind of see.
So, we'll schedule a meeting, and we'll put it out to everybody who, so you guys know what's going on. But if we have more than 4 there, we'd have to post it.
When is the ordinance coming through for the?
The energy one?
Energy?
It's coming, you guys are going to hear it in first meeting in January.
And so, are we just reviewing this for the changes that were made, or what's the...
And there's changes to that document.
Okay, yeah.
That you have in front of you that was sent out before, yeah. Basically, reviewing the changes. One ordinance is brand-new. Everything is, the solar ordinance, everything from word 1 to the last word is all brand-new. It's the wind ordinance that has most of the changes in it.
And I, just for my sake, is the expectation that we go through this and that if, that we make changes? Or these were changes that were recommended by a committee, and you want us just to review those changes and speak to those changes?
I believe, just like the vacation home rental, I mean, it's, you know, the vote, the way the vote ended up from the planning commission is we basically rejected the committee report.
For V H R, and then, yeah, tried to make various edits to it.
Yeah. And in retrospect, I'm not sure that was right. I, you know, there are some good points, and that should have been retained in our vote. We probably should have voted at least, you know, to look at other things. But I mean, I think you got hung up on the suburban residential, and we probably threw the baby out with the bathwater a little bit on some of that. Anyway, but I think the procedure, if I'm right, PJ's, I mean, the committee is reports to us. You know, then we help draft that to move forward to the county commissioners, that has the authority to make ordinances, so.
We'll have a discussion and questions and suggestions, right, just like?
Just like the H R ordinance went through, yes.
In public hearing?
Yes, yep. And if you need additional, we can do that, just like V H R.
Did something else concern you with it? Because you're kind of looking at it. I didn't know if you, something concerned?
I just, I want to make sure that the process that this board is supposed to conduct, I fully understand. So, I'm contributing.
And it's important to know the members of the committee. It was Commissioner Hadcock, Commissioner Lassiter. I was there. Chutima was there. We also had people in the industry and landowners present.
Anything else for membership? If not, an entertaining motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Take it.
Favor signify the thing. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
For adjourned.
Thank you.